Call the meeting to order at 7:00. Then we're gonna try and move it right along tonight. So if we could stand for the pledge allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have an approval of the agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you. And all in favor? And do we have any public input and announcements? I didn't get any.
None I'm aware of.
I don't see any. Okay. Um, no board discussion and approval of the minutes from the meeting on 8/23.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Uh, discussion?
Oh, sorry, discussion.
I only mentioned that because I have a note.
You do?
It says, "Meeting will be called the order by myself." I don't think I made that. I think Matt made that.
There you go.
That makes sense.
I'll back you up on that.
Okay, with that edit, um, all in favor? I will be abstaining because I was not present. Okay, so on to board education and strategic planning.
I'll throw that up on the screen just so we have it. Uh, I will let folks know a little bit of context and then we can check these out again. So, uh, I'll tell you what I have done and then I'll tell you what I haven't done but I'm planning on doing and if there's any conversation around that, fantastic. This was very timely. I don't love, oh, I don't love that when I make that larger, it squeezes it. Okay. It's about the best it's gonna get right now. Sorry about that. Uh, we had two wonderful retreat mornings, two Saturdays this summer, knocking out the board goals this year. And at our previous board meeting on the 23rd, this was brought to the full board for approval. And we got that approval. Great timing because our opening day with all our district staff was the Thursday after our board meeting. Uh, so I think I told you jokingly at the 23rd meeting, "Oh, great, now I don't have to change my presentation with staff." Uh, I did share the basics of this with staff. I did not give them the entire document, but I did share with them how we came to this, the work that we had done over the year and the two retreat days that we had done. Uh, I shared with them at the mission and vision, that we had done a little work, uh, taking what we had and refining it and, and bringing it, bringing it forward so it would be a little more up to date. So I shared the vision, mission, values with them, shared these board goals and where they came from and how we did that work. Uh, and I shared with them that the board is really looking to, uh, make a positive impact through trying to meet these goals. And I think big emphasis on the number two, continue to work to support staff. That's something that I think is fairly different and I highlighted that for staff because that was my audience, that our board goals in the past had a lot of focus on student achievement or student behavior or, or finances, things like that, that there was not a lot about supporting staff. So I highlighted that as a big change that they should be aware of. Uh, these are on our website now. The mission, vision, values are on our website as well. So that's what we've done so far. Uh, I have a plan that I'm thinking maybe Monday is gonna be reasonable timing for me to send a community update. Wanted to wait for school to start up and all the emails from new teachers and the open houses and all of that to happen so that I'm not clogging people's inbox with this while they're getting, you know, far more relevant, timely data from their teachers and their principals. So Monday or maybe Friday of next week, I'm planning an email communication to go out to our school community. So that's our caregivers so that they can be aware of the goals that the board has set. Um, I know not all of them check out the board meetings and I think it's important that we get this out to all of them as many ways as we can. When we get to our school visit schedule, part of looking at our school visit schedule is gonna be looking at how this work still fits in our regular meetings. Uh, if you remember a couple of meetings ago, we had a conversation around, are we gonna try and get to each of our elementary schools twice? Or is once reasonable? We, we went through our schedule for a year. We tried it out. Uh, we did what we said we were gonna do. I met with principals and had a conversation with them and then we had a conversation as a board and it seemed like everybody agreed, uh, one school visit, one presentation a year made sense. That frees up time so that we can periodically be doing strategic planning, board education in our regular meetings. Today, we don't have a presentation. Looking at these goals and working with these goals, uh, is really what we have in front of us today. And, and I think it makes sense to periodically build in, you know, maybe every two months, checking back in on these, seeing if we've made progress, thinking about what we need to do to make progress if we haven't and reflecting on that so that when we get to the summer, you know, we're not gonna say, "Yay, board goals, these are great." Then we get to the summer and go, "Oh, wait, did we do, did we do what we needed to do?" So tonight, I think, just spending some time looking at these and thinking about what might be something we wanna take on in the next three months. Because three months are gonna fly by. Uh, Cindy, I think you were saying right at the start of the meeting, "Wow, two weeks flies by. Here we go, another board meeting." It's gonna be two weeks and we're gonna be another board meeting and, and what work have we done here? Uh, so, that's me talking and done. I'd be curious to hear some reflections on some of these, you know, what, are there some of these that are gonna be really relevant at the start of the year and if so, how are we gonna tackle them?
Well, I think the one that's most relevant is the newsletter that we said maybe we would try to do at the beginning, maybe try to do at the end. So like figuring out, it's like, are you, do you, are you just in charge of writing that or do we do it by, commit, do we pick like two people that wanna work on that and then we bring it back? Because I don't, it might be, it's too much probably for the entire group to, to do, I think. But that's just my opinion.
I think we have to decide exactly what we wanna put in the newsletter too. I think we've already just come with the idea, we didn't get into details on it. Um, I mean, we set how often we wanted to do it, but we didn't say what exactly we want in it. And then I'm thinking if we do exactly what we want in it, we can, I mean, have no problem delegating out bits and pieces and pull the other and make a crafty newsletter, which Cindy is very good at it.
Well, she said you were very good at making newsletters.
Oh, really? So yeah, I think. We, yeah, can definite, we, I think we need to further on with our idea. We haven't done that yet.
Now, I was not at the second retreat, which is where I think that got.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so is that something we're putting out to the community?
Yeah.
What, is that the, okay. And how often?
We were doing.
I think we said, "Start with one." Commit to one and we'll see how things go because if we commit to three, uh, you know, maybe that's a harder.
So is it just like to update, like what's, what's going on?
What the board.
School, community, like a.
The board's perspective.
Okay.
And I think a little bit of it was introductions. Hey, we're your board members. Here's, here's how you should engage with us. Here's what we'd like to know from you, you know? It's the start of a year, you know?
This is what the board may, you know, is working on through the year, you know?
Like, is that something we'd be able to post? So like, being from Shrewsbury, we have the Shrewsbury Times. Like, can it get posted in the Shrewsbury Times? Something like that or is it going out separately?
We had talked about putting it on Front Porch Forum one and we had talked about sending it out through our normal distribution to get to our, so our families, we can easily get it to.
Yep.
Then Front Porch Forum hits the wider community a little bit, you know, anything like Shrewsbury Times, things like that, fantastic. And what I had said was, if you write the newsletter, I'll worry about making sure it gets out places. If you wanna get it in Shrewsbury Times, great, but I can commit to getting it to our school community and getting it on Front Porch Forum.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I think part of it, Bruce.
Bruce, go ahead.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask you, I guess. What would we put in the newsletter that we wouldn't have in a minute? I mean, would it be a quarterly newsletter?
No, it's once a year for right now. And I think it's like our year goals.
Yeah.
Like just talking about what the board wants. We're doing all this. We're completely revamping our, you know, vision, mission and values. I think it's more like we talk about what we want set or what we're gonna work on for the year. Being able, you know, more outreach to the community as, you know, members or just missions, you know, having, maybe we do it in the beginning of the year and having the new teacher, new staff, um, welcoming thing that we did last year and having some of us attend.
I think the other part of it is, is like, you know, I'm, there's only one of me in Ten Miss, so pretty.
I know.
Most people know that I'm the school, but like, there's a lot of people who, okay, I checked your name on a bot, like, you know, and even that have kids in the schools and stuff. It's just, I think, part of saying the goals and then also just being like, hey, you can, we're, we exist outside of election cycles and outside of meetings, you know, just, because I mean, we talked about that somewhere where we were saying like, we wanna make sure that the community and even staff and everybody knows it, you know, we are accessible.
Yeah. You know, and I've heard from folks, some folks say, "Yeah, I just don't wanna attend the board meeting. That's not, you know, not my thing." Like, okay, fair enough. So this is, I think, Bruce, a way to connect some people who maybe don't read the minutes or attend meetings or watch the videos, you know? We definitely have people that do pretty consistently, uh, but we have some that don't. So.
But those things, those things are posted, right?
Yeah.
Yep, oh yeah.
Yeah.
And our bios are posted.
Yep, oh yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the newsletter, I think, is a good place to.
I mean, I'll write a newsletter, I'm trying to think what you put in there to make it worth reading.
That's why I think we need to, right now.
Yep.
Start, maybe have a meeting prior to a board meeting, like when we're not doing personnel.
Yep.
Like we were gonna do every other for strategic planning type thing.
Can I make a suggestion? Like Josh said, so if only a couple of people really take it under their wing, um, I mean, we don't have a lot going on in the community engagement committee, like we haven't even had a meeting. Is that something that maybe we could take on?
I think perfectly great.
Those two go together really well.
Yes.
And I think if you think about, one great thing to put in a newsletter would be, here's how we're gonna create opportunities for you to engage with us, you know? If we're reviving the community conversation somehow, some way, you know, that's on here. So I think tackling both of those at the same time seems like a fantastic idea to me.
So maybe, yeah, we can set like a date.
I'm not on that committee anymore.
You're not?
Yeah. Give it to me.
And Liz.
And Liz.
Yeah, Liz.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we also think about putting in?
And Liz and Cindy and Sam. Those are the community engagement folks.
A process or the process?
And, you know, because we've talked about how people contact board members and just assume that we're gonna be able to fix it.
Everybody knows.
And we can't.
Maybe, yeah, giving a good definition of what the board actually is doing.
Here's our work.
And how.
And how.
If they do have a complaint, here's sort of the chain of command that, that's what I mean by the process.
Yep.
Is that.
Process or tiers, right?
Yeah.
Like, if this is your complaint, you should start here or start here or start here.
Right, exactly, exactly. I mean, if it's a Shrewsbury person, then it should, they should speak to Shrewsbury principal, let's say that's where it starts.
So in, in my mind, I'm sorry, I'm an English teacher, so, but I bet Bruce will have a better version of this. I start thinking, you're gonna tell them who we are, what we do and how to engage with us. You know, who we are, introduce ourselves, uh, what we do, the process and our, you know, role and then how to engage with us, the community engagement pieces. And I think that's a good three chunks to put in a newsletter, maybe.
We have to make sure that every year is not the same newsletter.
Yeah, right. Well, that's why maybe this year it's like, hey, look, we did these new goals.
This is our first, yeah.
Like emphasize that. And then next year, I guarantee you, there'll be something.
Sure.
Well, and we can even do like something cute at the end, like fun fact about school. How many people know that it's gonna be, what, 50 years?
Yeah.
It's coming up.
Coming up. Which we need to discuss that again.
2026?
Yes. We need to get working on that. But, um, you know, like something else too, liven it up a little bit.
But it's, you know, in my mind, it is just like the principals of the school send out a, "Hey, welcome back to school." Like, it's, it's our like, welcome back to, you know, the same thing where it's.
And I don't think it's a bad thing if we're redundant on some of the other things that go out to the community because, you know, person A might, might, you know, read this, but not this.
Good point.
And like in advertising, it's like, you know, you need a certain amount of impressions before anything actually works.
Frequency and reach.
Right?
Good points.
All right, so.
Would you wanna?
When community engagement comes up, maybe you guys can.
Set a date.
Set a date.
Gives us a reason to have a meeting.
Right.
There you go.
But is.
And I think, I think that's enough to tackle right now. Uh, I think the important thing is, we're looking at our goals that we set, we're thinking about what's next. If we keep doing that, great. Sorry, I cut you off, Lynn.
That's okay. Do we wanna just put in somewhere that, you know, our emails are on the website? You know, we don't have to be redundant and print all our emails.
Yeah.
But let them know where they can go to get them.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. I, I think that's great for the board education, strategic planning, that, I mean, that was my hope, that we would reflect on those and figure out what's next.
I wanna include that, that this year we're going to be engaging in, what was the term? Board education and strategic planning on a, on a regular basis.
Oh, okay.
Because we haven't done that before. That I can recall.
And you know something, I, sorry, I am talking a lot, I apologize, but I think this is relevant. Did anybody sign up for the VSBA latest webinar they did on board governance changes? I will send you, I will send you a link to that. Starting July 1st, 2025, so two years, uh, there have been governance, uh, guidelines, I think, um, not requirements or regulations, but some guidelines that have been adopted. And guess what? Regularly reflecting on goals throughout the year is one of those.
The meeting's tomorrow at noon.
Evaluation is one of those.
Yeah, it's during the day.
Yeah, you can always watch them afterward, that's why I never register for them.
That's what I normally do is watch them after because it's tomorrow.
I'll send you the webinar link so you have it. But the work that this board is doing, we're well ahead of that, that, uh, when those go into effect, we're doing that work already, which I think is cool.
Good, aren't we?
All right. Are you ready for your next?
Budget calendar, yep. Grab that one.
I like when you book all your stuff right in row.
Ha, I, I try to organize them so that things kind of flow. Uh, budget timeline, fantastic. Uh, this will not look too different from last year. Uh, last year, we did a little bit of a revamp. Uh, I know Matt had asked a couple of meetings ago, are we gonna do some of those community forums again? Uh, they're absolutely on here because I think that went well. I think, uh, we got some really good feedback from the community. Having our, having our teachers come and present, we got some good feedback hearing from them throughout the fall, but then having the community come in too, I think was helpful. Uh, we did have finance meeting on the 31st. We had a good conversation around what the landscape's gonna look like for this budget season. It doesn't look bad. Uh, it looks somewhat favorable. Uh, I don't know if folks remember, but there is, there was legislation that was passed several years ago about pupil weighting. So if you think about how many dollars we get per student, they changed the formulas and those are going into effect for next fiscal year. So budgeting this year is gonna be a little bit different because say, say you would get 100% for a regular student, but you would get 120% funding for an English language learner. I'm making those numbers out, but that's what that pupil weighting means. An English language learner might be weighted more than a regular student when it comes to getting dollars from the state. Because they changed pupil weighting for the next several years, they've changed the requirement for what goes on the ballot. We've always by statute been required to show the increase or decrease in our student spending per student. Uh, last year, there was a last minute, "Oh yeah, by the way, this is a crazy budget year for everybody, so you don't need to put that." Well, we put it because I, we had a conversation as a board that to change that last minute just didn't feel right to us. Uh, but moving, moving into the next several years, uh, everybody's gonna be in that same boat of pupil weighting is gonna shift things. So let's say, for example, if pupil weighting made our budget look terrible, well, if we put a percentage change on our ballot, that, you know, we didn't do that, you know, the legislature did that. So I think the thinking was that it was pretty unfair to try and hold districts accountable when it was the state that changed the weighting. We are looking like we're actually gonna be in a favorable position. So our, our percentage change wouldn't be terrible, uh, with the pupil weighting changes. Uh, so I think that's, that's good to know, that we're not looking at anything too crazy this budget season. We are still looking at, you know, carrying forward the special ed funding change, which added a lot to our local budget, so that's still there. Uh, we also talked about a little different approach to funding supplies. Instead of every department always gets a little bit of money for supplies every year and wow, that's hard to really do anything meaningful with, but people really race to spend their dollars because they don't get many of them, thinking about rotating that funding so that we've always got a set amount of funding, but one department has more this year, one department has more the next year and one department has more the year after. So being a little more efficient with our funding so that people aren't scrambling to spend dollars, they're spending them on things that are really worth investing in. I feel like we talked about one other thing, Liz, do you remember?
I, unfortunately, I don't have those notes in front of me.
No, fair enough.
Uh, and we did, and, um.
What did we talk about? Oh, I know, I know, I know. The surplus, talking about surplus spending. We used $700,000 of surplus to bring the tax rate down for this budget year. We now have a $1.5 million surplus. Well, that's pretty close to 700,000 twice. So, so if you start thinking out five years from now, you go, "Wow, are we gonna continue to have that much surplus every year? Probably not." Uh, we've had some interesting years with COVID that gave us a surplus. Uh, there have been some other circumstances that have, uh, generated that surplus for us. Those are likely not going to continue. So we talked about coming up with a strategic way to slowly wean ourselves off of needing that surplus to keep the tax rate low. Because if we get to a year where we go, uh, 700,000 to pay it down, three years in a row, maybe four, we get lucky, oh, year five, we have nothing to pay the tax rate down, wow, that's gonna hurt. That's gonna swing the tax rate a lot versus coming up with a plan where maybe next year we use 600,000, then 500, then 400. So Stan and I are coming up with a proposal to bring to finance that eases us out of really relying on that surplus because that's not a good long-term strategy for us. It just isn't. And we don't, uh, small increases every year, I think will be more palatable than bam, everybody gets hit one year down the road and who knows when it's gonna be. So, those were the three things we talked about, finance meeting. Uh, Stan and I are, go ahead, Bruce.
I just gotta question you for back a little bit. Do we have any students enrolled in Mill River or the district or whom English is not their first language this year?
No, we don't. Not, we, it's been several years, we really haven't. We had a couple of students at Clarendon a couple of years back and they were only here for a short period of time before I think they moved to Burlington. I think what you find lots of times is that if you, certain districts have far more resources because they have a higher population of English language learners, so sometimes, uh, folks end up moving around to find those communities because we have nobody, so we have no supports. So to have a full-time English language teacher would be hard for us. So, yeah, good question, Bruce, no, we don't and we haven't in a long time that I'm aware of. Uh, so Stan and I will be meeting with principals and department directors, we'll do the same thing we did last year. Last year, we really talked about building the budget from the ground up and by doing that, we found out that, well, gosh, there's not a lot of wiggle room. Uh, we pretty much ended up with almost exactly what we had on paper when we sat down and tried to do that work. We will still be meeting with people individually. The conversation will be less about, okay, let's start from scratch and see what you need. It'll be more about, okay, uh, what's changed? What do we need to address? What do you need more of? What could you do with less of? So, but we will still have those conversations so that we can have a budget that has as much input from those folks as possible. Uh, we've got an October 5th finance committee meeting on the books. Uh, that'll be our initial budget ideas based on those conversations with principals, department heads. That surplus management piece that I was talking about is gonna be brought to that meeting too. Nick, you got a question?
Uh, you're also working with finance and B&amp;G on a five-year plan too, right?
Yeah, the, and that did come up at the meeting, good point. Uh, we're, we need to think too about, uh, how much are we gonna put on the ballot into the building fund every year? If we've got a five-year plan from B&amp;G, fantastic, but if we know that five-year plan is underfunded, you know, uh, that 700,000 a surplus, next year maybe it's 600,000, but we're putting more into B&amp;G, if that makes sense. So we do need to figure out if we can fully fund that five-year plan. Great, great addition, Nick. Uh, end of October, we finalize our enrollment numbers. That's just an interesting thing that the state of Vermont does. You have like a, a 10, 15-day window in October where you report to the state students that are enrolled in that window. If everybody unenrolled in November, our, our funding would not change. It's kind of funny. Our funding is based on that window, so we'll be able to finalize our numbers at the end of October so that we can move forward with a firm budget based on what we're getting. Uh, late October, we'll probably have a meeting to, late October, early November, we'll schedule a meeting to look at some more specific proposals. Late November is when we'll start having those focus groups. We'll have enough information in front of us that I think we can take that feedback and use that better. I, I've thought about trying to do that earlier, like, gosh, maybe in the summer where there's more time and we could be more flexible about when we do those. But I think the challenge is, if we get a bunch of feedback in the summer, but then we heard that the pupil weighting stuff was really gonna kill us, well, gosh, we can't do anything with that feedback. So I think it's, I do still think it's timely to get that feedback. to get that feedback late fall, if that makes sense. So we'll plan for those. We'll host a couple of them. December 1, we get our Tax Commissioner letter. That will be fun, as we're biting our nails a couple of days before we get that letter. That'll help us really finalize our budget. I would really like to have a firm budget in December. I don't want to come back in January and have it. That way, we have some time just in case we need it. Two Januaries ago, we were calling a special meeting in January to approve a budget. I'd like to avoid calling a special meeting. Let's, if we aim for December, great, we don't need a special meeting, and I think that just makes things move a little more smoothly. Rather be ahead of the curve than behind the curve. December, we'll get that wonderful information about CLA on our towns. Interesting in that timing, that we will pretty much have a set budget. Then we'll find out the implications for towns. Some of the timelines on this are really challenging, and that's just the way it is by statute. That's the way things go. January, we will have that meeting and get some approval for a budget. If we hadn't gotten it yet in October, or in December, sorry, contractual deadlines hit early January, so if we do have some reductions in force, we would be looking at that then. Approval from the full board, annual meeting, town meeting, budget vote. And that brings us to issuing contracts. Questions about that timeline?
My only comment, I think we need, and maybe we can do this at the next finance meeting, but the dates for the public forums need, now need to be set. And then they need to be in principal emails for like a month. And when people come to Len and say, grumble, 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 now, or like, you know, a month from now, he can say, well, here's the time to do it.
And to Paul's point, we get it out a couple of different ways. And I do think that was something last year that we were releasing that information with not a lot of lead time, and I think we can do better on that this year. Do you think, Josh, if we set that, if we set those dates, October 5th, and then just turn around and start?
Yes, I think that's exactly what we should do.
Okay. Great. Other suggestions, changes? Because this is not necessarily set in stone. Ways we could do this better? Allow me the state to change their timelines?
Yeah, go for it.
That would be perfect.
I think the other part, that meeting with the principals, and you said you're going to meet with the chair, like the department heads here, and just really, because if we are changing to a cyclical, is, we want it to be a support, right?
More than elementary.
But we want it to be a, like, part of our board goals is, we want to make sure that it doesn't feel like we're shoving something down, that it is like, this is how it's going to benefit you. Let's hear your feedback.
And we have, you know, we have a wonderful opportunity because the board did add some funding for supplies. I've talked with Kalen about meeting with department chairs and saying, how are we going to use the funding we have? Not just, what would you like to do in the future, but we've got funding, how are we going to use it? Are you just going to divvy it up equally? Or do you want to think about, one department really needs it? You know, math got a lot of grant-funded materials, maybe science needs something this year. But that, to your point, Josh, it would be the group weighing in on that.
Right. And them saying, you have this money this year, be prepared that this system will be in place next year, so you should maybe think that it's already in place, or make that decision.
It's in the budget. It would have to be a cut if we took it out.
Well, I'm saying of how they're going to divvy it up. It's there, but maybe start the, the group gets it this time.
The thinking process. Yeah, good. Other thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we rescinded, we'll probably act on rescinding E2, which requires this budget calendar to be brought to the board. I think I'm probably going to do it anyway. I just think it's good to get it out public and keep the ball rolling, so. Thank you, everybody.
You're next.
I'm next. School visit schedule. I will throw one more up there for you. This will look familiar. Was that, I missed that. Was that Liz? Or was that Liz? Go ahead.
Yeah, that's me. Hi, is that, is that something that you can share? I'm unfortunately on my phone.
Yep. Oh, yeah, because this, this I have not, this was not in the materials, so thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
I will send this to you right now so you can look at it. Yeah, and sorry, I didn't have this.
Is this like last year's?
This is updated.
This is updated.
Same format. I was still doing a little background work with principals to try and figure out good timing, so I did not have something ready to go in the materials packet. Brief overview here. If you see an orange, we're talking about goal work. So because we've scaled back to one meeting at elementaries a year, we get a good pattern of looking at those goals every two months. So that's like every fourth meeting, which I think is a reasonable, reasonable pattern. That also gives us an opportunity, if we want to talk about board education too, we could say, well, maybe we don't need to look at our goals. Let's do an education session. Let's spend 20 minutes talking about this governance piece and figuring out how we feel about it. We still have our board policy required ones sprinkled throughout, like the PD and curriculum we just did. Budget calendar is tonight. Class size, equity policy, budget, restraint, seclusion, audit, student wellness, those are all in there. Five-year facilities plan and strategic planning update with assessment test course stuff is in there still. So those are kind of woven throughout. What I, and as I alluded to in personnel meeting, Kalen is scheduled tentatively to have a conversation around our guidance department on the 20th. Then we would work in the middle school, math department, ELA department, science, social studies, like we did last year. I'm recommending that October, and I actually think Shrewsbury is going to work well for October, we go up to Shrewsbury in October before we have too much of a threat of winter weather.
Yep.
And we can also rotate a little bit, so we do almost that pattern of elementary, high school, elementary, high school, but it's going to be a little more like elementary, two high schools, elementary, two high schools. Clarendon in November, and yeah, we could get some weather in November, but hey, if we're coming down here, Clarendon's right there, so I figured that was fairly safe for November. Wallingford in January, again, I was thinking that was reasonably safe because we weren't going up the mountains. And then Tinmouth in March, we'd, I think, be pretty darn safe by the end of March for Tinmouth.
So let's just say that Wallingford in January, just thinking of our Shrewsbury-Tinmouth people, if they can't make it off the mountain, we would just bump it.
Yeah.
We have tires that work.
Well, I know, Josh, but I'm just giving the, just because.
You just won't be able to make it home.
Yeah, we still can't do, we don't do hybrid.
This is not something going to the board for approval, or adoption, or anything. This is just our, it's nice to have a plan. You know, we can, last year, we absolutely switched things around, and we bumped things, and we moved things.
We have a really nice inn, not too far from this elementary school.
That's right. BJ does have a proposal that he worked up to do hybrid meetings at the elementaries. I may have him come on the 20th and give you a little 10-minute spiel about what that would look like. It's got a little bit of a cost to it and some personnel pieces to it, but that's something that we've got time, we've got time to explore a little bit. Might not have that in place for Shrewsbury on the 4th, but I think we're safe. We may be able to have that in place maybe November, if that makes sense. Sports, we're still doing that quarterly, so we'd have sports on October 4th, and then in December, and then April, and then June.
Are we scheduling sports like before the next big season?
What we've tried to do is have that line up a little bit with either a season just ended or a season just started.
Okay. That's one to me.
Doesn't always work.
We're not like in the middle of a season.
They're just getting ready to ramp up, so. And I asked him, hey, of these range of dates, what makes sense? And she said 4th was good, so. But still thinking that that's somewhat quarterly that we're getting some sports update there. I think this is good. I really like how we did it last year. One of the things that I think for like year over year over year is to make sure we're not seeing the same thing in the same month every year, because someone's opinion in, you know, the fall is different than someone's opinion in the spring. Are you thinking really about school visits?
Not even school, like, there's some depart, like, the budget thing always has to happen right now. But like, do we talk to math, like, in high school? Like, the high school departments are the ones that are the easiest to rotate around.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And then just like, you know, guidance or something like that, because you get it, there's just different perspectives at different times of the year.
Yeah. And, you know, something I was thinking about was switching up the elementary schools, so we're not always here in the same school in the fall.
Yeah.
I wasn't thinking about departments, so I like that. I might do a little adjusting, you know, not moving too much, but going, oh, I might swap math, ELA with science, social studies or something.
Well, even just the guidance part, like, okay, right now is crazy for guidance, with switching, so why not?
The only reason I do think the guidance one still makes sense for the 20th, we have some personnel shift pieces and some coverage stuff that I think it's good for people to know.
Yeah. Good, but then, you know, touching base on them, different times during the year.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Or even like, you know, not during their crazy times.
Yeah. No, that's good, good points. So if this, you know, not we're committing to every single thing on here is going to happen exactly how it is on here, but that will use this as a guide, you know, I probably don't show it to you, but when we do agenda building, I always pull this up, just to see what's coming next, so. And I'll put this in next, next board meetings materials, just so everybody has a copy of it, if that makes sense. Okay.
All right.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Now, we're on to committee. Personnel.
Good evening.
Good evening, one.
Have some contracts. First one is a contract for Jennifer Hart as a long-term sub K through 12 intervention, point four, full-time equivalency, and I would make a motion to offer this contract to Jennifer Hart.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discussion?
You may have noticed that the start and end date are to be determined. This is a person who's going on leave, and we just don't know the exact dates, so this is long-term sub to fill in while somebody is on leave. You'll see another position that's the counterpart to this to make up a 1.0.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very good. And speaking of the next point six position, I'd make, yeah, I would make a motion that we offer Rebecca Stockton a contract as a long-term sub K through 12 intervention, point six, full-time equivalency.
I'll second it.
Cindy. Discussion?
I assume we must have done this because that was the availability of these people?
Yeah, and Becky Stockton is fantastic and has worked with us for a long, long time. She retired. She actually came back to do some part-time intervention grant work last year. You know, she only wants to work so much because she's retired. And actually, Jennifer Hart, I think, worked here ages ago.
Yes.
And then she worked in Rutland for a long, long time, but I think she was, she's an alumni too.
Yep, I remember her.
Yep. So both of them are coming back to help us out. Good question.
And her time is also dependent upon when the leave takes place, when the person goes on leave, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is a contract, I'd make a motion for a contract for Christina Hansen, K through 12, district-level support, basically a dean of students, 1.0 full-time equivalency, and this position is not subject to automatic renewal and is contingent upon grant funding.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Liz. Discussion?
What's the extent of the grant?
This year, it's Essar funding that this is our final year of accessing that funding. This is a position that we had filled last year, the person left. We almost filled it, so you may have deja vu. We brought a contract pretty similar to this a couple of meetings ago. Didn't fill it, left it open, got a late applicant. That looked really good. And the committee here at the high school interviewed, and we're pleased, so that's why we're bringing it tonight.
Other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have some coaches contracts. I have three high school/middle school volunteers. These are folks who are given a dollar stipend, and that's it. I mean, but they, that allows us to list them as volunteers, and also as employees as well. So I have three of them, and I'd like to put them all together because they're all the dollar stipend. There's a contract for, or a stipend for Mallory Tarble for cross-country volunteer, a stipend for Ian Smith, middle school soccer volunteer, and a dollar stipend for Carrie Valenti as a golf volunteer. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept these.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. Next one, we have three elementary coaches. And I think I'll do these separately, just because. One is for Greg McGowan as the fifth and sixth girls soccer, elementary soccer coach. And I'd make a motion that we offer Greg a stipend, his stipend is $400.
I'll second.
Thanks, Andrea. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And keep in mind, Mackenzie Belendo, who's the elementary athletic director, many of these positions were not in place last year. So, and if you also remember, we made it a point to try to expand middle school athletics, and this is the results.
And what did we say? Mackenzie might also fill in for that third, fourth coach?
Yeah, Kim was saying, and I think I got this right, don't quote me 100%, but I think Kim was saying that Mackenzie was going to cover the one, third, fourth boys that doesn't have a coach yet.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next, fifth and sixth grade boys soccer coach, Rick Wilson, also a stipend of $400. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Cindy. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Oops, one more. Third and fourth grade girls soccer, $400 stipend for Ally Wilson, and I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nick. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Two more things. First is a letter of resignation from a school counselor at high school, Dia Kimball. First is a letter of resignation from a school counselor at high school, Dea Kimball, and she is resigning as of September 5th, and I would make a motion to accept her resignation.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Liz can have it.
Discussion?
Part of the reason that I was recommending that we keep guidance on the 20th is to talk about the coverage there that folks have started putting into place, actually had in place almost immediately, so I think that's good for folks to know.
This wasn't planned on our part.
Yeah, correct. So we had some last-minute scrambling, and I think good to share with everybody the work that was done to put things together.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And the last one is resignation from Mary Sacrick-Clark, who is, was a para, had accepted a para educator contract at Shrewsbury Mountain School, but has chosen for personal reasons not to, to resign her position as para educator in Shrewsbury. So I would make a motion that we accept her resignation.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nick. Discussion?
Can we have her just, I know that we talked about this in personnel, but it says in here she wishes to not accept. Can we just have her something, say something that she's resigning? Because that almost sounds mixed, because she's already signed and was due to start late.
I'll talk to Coral and see if we have anything that is more specific, you know, in terms of.
Brian, I'm here and I believe that I may and I'll forward that.
Okay. And if we don't, if we don't, we'll talk to Mary and we'll get something.
Just because I know, like, the date is like literally the day before.
Yep.
But she says she doesn't accept. We need her to say she resigned, because she had already signed.
Well, and I also think, you know, she ends by saying, I will wait to hear how I should proceed.
Yeah, so.
And I think she was, with that, there was follow-up. It was more around, you know, what do you need from me? What can I expect from you?
Right, right.
You know, that kind of, final paycheck, that kind of.
And then maybe offer the, you know, like we do everybody, exit interview stuff.
Thank you, Coral.
Yes, you're welcome. We'll connect on that tomorrow, Brian.
Okay.
That was all I had for discussion.
Hmm?
That was all I had for discussion.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? Lenny's done. Next, I'm not done. Personnel meeting will be October 4th at 6:30.
That's my son's birthday.
Thank you. One and all.
So we have E2, E5, and E7 that have been out for the second read that we need approval to resend. And we're falling behind, like, we're doing that backpedaling thing, so. I make a motion to resend E2. I'm going to do them all separate.
Seconded.
Um, any discussion on it?
I'll just say those were in the paper, so we hit our timeline, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, to give us the 10 days.
All in favor? Okay. And then I make a motion to resend policy E5.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Um, all in favor? Okay, and then I make a motion to resend E7.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor? All right, that is all I had. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, and Len will be running the meeting, as I will not be able to get there on time.
Did you say the 16th?
Next, yep.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. Okay, on to buildings and grounds.
No update since our last board meeting. We do have our next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 3rd at 5 o'clock, so I will have a, an update the first meeting in October.
Okay, um, community engagement. You guys want to set your date?
Is there a night that works better?
Who the week is that, anyway?
I can't do Tuesdays.
When is your next one?
When is the week works? Oh, I was on another topic here, I'm sorry.
Do you want to just throw out some dates, because my calendar is going to miss?
Yeah.
September's pretty busy back to school.
Talking about buildings and grounds or?
Uh, community engagement.
Oh.
Um, what about?
I mean, can we?
Do you want to do a Thursday night?
I should be able to do a Thursday.
What about the 21st of September?
Do we have a board meeting on the 20th?
We do.
Do we start early that night for?
No.
Nothing before?
It's the day after.
Do you want to meet right before?
Can we meet right before the board meeting?
Yeah.
Like, even if we come at 6?
Yep. Can you do that, Liz? Can you do at 6? I know would travel for you.
Yeah, is my microphone off?
No, I can hear you.
Okay.
So the 20th at 6, can you?
Yeah, I, I'll, I can turn remotely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So 9:20 at 6 o'clock. Perfect, negotiations.
So we did hold a meeting a couple days ago. Basically, what we covered in that meeting was bringing new members of the committee up to speed on sort of what's expected from us on our side of the negotiation table, kind of talked about, you know, rules and procedures, certain things along those guidelines. And at this point, we do not have another meeting scheduled, but I believe Brian's going to be reaching out to me at some point soon to get that lined up.
After I, after I meet with union presidents and we have a little informal conversation around timing, yes, we'll find our next meeting.
But other than that, we're sort of getting ready to hit the ground running, so it's, we should be, I'd imagine, sometime in November will be when we'll start negotiating, so. Thanks.
Okay, finance.
All right, can the votes be handed?
Yep.
All right, meeting everyone, for payroll review, dated September 6, we have regular payroll in the amount of $593,656.57. Also dated September 6, we have regular payroll in the amount of $115 for a grand total of For pay orders, we have from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $139,655.04. Also from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $10,018.79. And from our after, full, full program, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,999.04 for a grand total of $153,672.83. From our student activity, from our student activities accounts for Mill River, we have a pay order in the amount of $4,220. And I would like to make the motion that we accept these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
I'll second that.
Um, since I can't, you guys are so small.
Nick?
Can someone call the discussion and then the vote, please, on my behalf?
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, Liz.
All right, thank you, Andrea. So the next meeting of the finance committee is, I believe, is October 5th or Thursday? I don't dare look at my calendar.
I'm pretty sure that is.
Uh, yep, a Thursday, you do it at 4.
A Thursday, did we say 4 p.m.?
Yeah.
Great, okay, so the next meeting of the finance committee is Thursday, October 5th at 4 p.m. And Brian, thank you for the timeline for our work.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, do you have any other legal business?
Did you say 4 p.m.?
Yes, have four.
I, I'll share one. I, Matt, George Ambrose came by the other day.
Aww.
And we had a nice little conversation.
Who's George?
Yeah, he's doing well. He's staying pretty busy with the select board, and I told George that one of these days I will make it over to the select board meeting. I think Kalen has gone out to meet the select board last year, and I think Jane has, too. So our Clarendon principal, our high school principal, so I told George that I would do that, and I told him that we always miss him during transact other legal business. Nobody has puns like George, so. All I got.
Okay, agenda building.
The only thing I have right now is guidance presentation.
I will not be present at next meeting, so Matt will be running it. So load him up with some good stuff.
If that's all we have, that might be a really short meeting. Do we, well, you know what? Why don't we put, if community engagement is spending an hour, should we bring whatever we got done there, too? Okay, so I'll put, I'll put board goals on there, and that'll be our way to do that. Okay. I will have, I'm just remembering, I'm going to have a bid, a contract.
You'll have BJ home?
Not for BJ. Oh, I could, yeah, you're right. Thank you for reminding me of that. BJ can give us the.
Lowdown on.
Yep, the remote hybrid elementaries.
Okay.
Perfect. And I've got a quick bid for our wood, wood boiler, wood chip boiler. We've got to renew that contract. Okay.
Anything else? Want on there? Okay. Executive session. I would like to call one and include Brian.
Okay.
In it. If we can just do like a five-minute executive session.
Four? Yes, we need.
You have to state a reason.
Um, for our vacant board member.
Um.
So is that a legitimate reason?
I would just like to explore communication options.
I don't know that we can, don't know that we can do that unless.
An executive?
Yeah, because we're not, we're not talking about disciplinary or dismissal. We're just having a conversation about reaching out, so I think, I think that doesn't qualify.
Talk about.
Can we talk about it right now?
Andrea, I think in the past, the chair has reached out to individual board members.
So I have.
Okay.
If we're, are we okay with talking about it for like five minutes?
Yep.
Okay. So I have twice no response, so I'm wondering if maybe next step is, um, maybe the select one, like, and I know that sometimes people hear from Maria, um, our old board member, but I.
I know Liz has reached out once, and I've reached out once.
And, yeah, and I don't know if Cindy has.
Is it covered by statute? I can't, we're going to quickly, so we need to see what statute says, or someone might know from maybe previous matters with which we've dealt, but I.
I think, sorry, Liz, if you were still talking, I don't want to cut you off. I think the little bit of digging that I did, if it's not in our bylaws, you know, attendance is a non-issue unless it's specifically in our bylaws, and I think looking at Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules doesn't address attendance unless it's in bylaws, and I don't think statute is going to address attendance either. Our bylaws are silent on attendance, and actually, I think that's a, for a board of this size and the work that we do, I don't know that that's even appropriate to set attendance requirements. I think the challenge is, the challenge is, you know, somebody can resign from the board and we have a vacancy, but for the board, the board would have to enter into like disciplinary action, like a hearing, like something like that, to create a vacancy, if it's not a resignation that creates that vacancy. So I think it's, you know, our hands get kind of tied with what we, what we can actually do.
Well, I'll just try to keep reaching out to where I go.
And my concern is, is that this board member we're discussing is on the negotiations committee. And as we enter into negotiations, which are very important, and, you know, you've got people from the union coming, and, you know, you've got meetings, and if we're one person close or always not having quorum, that becomes an issue for me.
And they're also the chair of community engagement.
But we, we specifically updated our bylaws to address those sorts of scenarios. We can change that committee membership. We just need to do that as a full board.
Okay.
So if we want to change those, membership on any of those committees, I think that's a reasonable thing to do on the 20th.
Okay. Let's put on the agenda for the 20th.
Yep.
I also think it's worth reaching out to the select board, so maybe they can put it on their agenda, because there's people that go to select board meetings that don't pay attention to board meetings.
Yep.
And so it's just another point of maybe there's someone else who has.
Andrea, how'd you, how'd you reach out?
Emails?
Emails, okay.
Break to the school board email account.
Um, I will reach out again, and I will text her, and I know prior to this, I had text and called, and there was still nothing, so I'll, I'll tomorrow do a bunch of more.
To be prepared for the 20th, we can't remove a member from a committee, but we can add. Adding members can make it easier to get to quorum if you add members that you know are committed and are going to show up, if that makes sense, so.
I mean, they're worth it to add one person.
Yeah, be thinking about that, because that's what we can do, per our bylaws.
I do think it's important to reach out to the select board.
I'll do that, too, when I send my.
I just think, I mean, we all have absences.
I mean, I've missed a few days here or there, it happens, but, I mean, we haven't seen a member, I think, since April, May.
It's been spring.
Yeah, since spring.
Yeah.
It's like April or May, I think.
And it happened before.
Yes.
Yep.
And it's understandable, and if you're, but it's not understandable to not, you know, reach out.
Right, and you can serve resign.
Right, exactly.
No.
You can't want.
Not entitled to.
You can't serve resign.
No, I know.
I didn't hear, sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Okay. All right, are we good?
I think we're good.
Good, good? All right, adjourned at 8:09. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.